We have only used to be a whole summer. It's pretty challenging. There are problems, I guess. Yeah. I think it is. I passed through going down to Texas. Can we do a work here? I'm looking at a trip to Florida. I've seen my great neighbors. They've come back. Who's my wife's? Yes, it is. I don't know. Are you gonna ask? For some reason. She was telling me that.
Well, I've got something to mention since I've been here.
What?
I've been meaning to mention since I've been here.
I'm not getting anything from you.
Yep.
So I booked the flight. I phoned the guys. They had vouchers. They usually buy vouchers. They were expiring by the 11th. They had to be booked by the 11th. I said, well, you can go by 1100. He said, oh, I have two of 550. Is he got 10 more?
Okay, let me go ahead and convene the city council on May 8th and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Fanouken?
Here.
Markwart?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Eight present?
Thank you. We do have a quorum convened. I'll ask Officer Pulos to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Did I get the name right? Erky, I apologize.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the agenda before us this evening. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markwart. A roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carried. Thank you. Before turning the floor over to Ron Klein this evening for swearing in the newly elected members, I want to thank the people who have supported me in this role over the past four years. I appreciate the support from first and foremost, my family, who have given me the freedom to contribute to community service. Secondly, the city staff. You are to be commended for supporting the core values of this council as you deliver service and value to citizens with integrity, professionalism, excellence, service, collaboration, and accountability. Your dedication has been and is noticed and deeply appreciated. Thirdly, volunteers. Thank you to everyone who serves on mayoral-appointed commissions and committees. We have 14 commissions, seven seats on each, so there are close to 100 individuals who step up in a volunteer role on those commissions and committees. Fourthly, the citizens. Thanks to all those supporting me these past four years. We have had open dialogue, and I appreciate the confidence given me in my service to the citizens of the community. This includes all those investing in DeKalb businesses. And lastly, my fellow council members, my colleagues and team members on this council. You have been a good team as we have conducted the business of the city. Thank you one and all, and now I will turn to Ron Klein for the swearing in of the new officials, after which they will assume their seats at the dais. I would invite any family members that are present. If you'd like to come and stand with the officials as they're sworn in, you're certainly welcome to come forward with those officials. Let me first then ask Ron Klein to assume the podium, and we'll ask Susanna Herman to come forward to be sworn in as city clerk. Thank you. It's an honor to be able to swear in these fine people. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I Suzanne M. Herman.
I Suzanne M. Herman.
Having been elected to the position of city clerk in the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
Having been elected to the position of city clerk in the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of city clerk to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Yep. Next. Next is Bill Fanouken, second Ward Alderman. Hopefully I remember how to pronounce his names. Ready? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I William S. Fanusen.
I William S. Fanusen.
Having been elected to the position of Alderman of Ward Two.
Having been elected to the position of Alderman of Ward Two.
In the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb and county of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Patrick Fagan is next. Patrick Fagan. I Patrick E. Fagan.
I Patrick E. Fagan.
Having been elected to the position of Alderman of Ward Four.
Having been elected to the position of Alderman of Ward Four.
In the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
City of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability. Congratulations. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I Michael D. Burbick.
I Michael D. Burbick.
Having been elected to the position of Alderman of Ward Six.
Having been elected to the position of Alderman of Ward Six.
In the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I Anthony L. Favor.
I Anthony L. Favor.
Having been elected to the position of Alderman of Ward Seven.
Having been elected to the position of Alderman of Ward Seven.
In the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Next, Jerry Smith. Last but not least. Mr. Smith, I presume? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I Jerry Smith, having been elected to the position of mayor.
I Jerry Smith, having been elected to the position of mayor.
Of in the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb, county of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully execute the responsibilities of mayor to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jerry, I'll turn this chair over to you and wish you well. You notice how those jackets came off?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor John Ray for his service to the city of DeKalb over the last four years, and most recently during the few times we've had a chance to get together in John's office. This has been a very, very smooth transition as it relates to John Ray transitioning his office over to Jerry Smith, and John, I appreciate that. Thank you. On April 5th, the day after having been elected your new mayor, I began what has been a whirlwind educational journey. I've learned so very, very much, and I have so very, very much to learn. During the past month, I've had the opportunity to visit one-on-one with each of these fine Aldermen. City staff has gotten to know me a bit better, and they've been very helpful in answering my myriad of questions. I've already attended three commission meetings, and will visit with all of our volunteer committees and boards over the next several weeks. Sycamore's new mayor Kurt Lang and I have had several discussions on how our two communities might work together. Many of our constituents have already reached out to me. As a result, I've been asked to meet with property owners, developers, a host of different organizations. Some pleased, some not so pleased. I was careful not to promise too much. What I did do is pledge to listen, to study, to engage others in the conversation, to be honest, and to be fair. Tonight, as I transition from mayor-elect to mayor of the city of DeKalb, I pledge to do my very best. I've asked our city council and city staff to do the same. I've asked City Hall to work hard, to be friendly, to be transparent in communicating with our constituents, and to respect those with whom we may not always agree. Finally, we're going to seek your ideas, your input, and your participation in city government. Let's roll up our sleeves and make DeKalb a more vibrant university community, a safer place to live, to work, and to raise our families, in a city where there is opportunity for all. We will move forward for the common good. Let's move on together. Thank you. Now, I would like to start the agenda as I've picked it up, and I do ask for your patience as we roll through this evening. I'm going to ask Superintendent, or Street Superintendent Mark Espy, to provide information regarding a very wonderful award and recognition. It's the 2017 Tree City USA Award. Mark?
Thank you. This has been a long journey that's begun almost 20 years ago. A lot of credit needs to go back to Jeppertel, Street Superintendent prior to myself, John Conlin, and Roger Newman. Those are the people that basically started this program, so. Tim will tell you everything behind it.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, residents of the city of DeKalb. It's Mark and I's honor to be here tonight to share with you the recognition that we've recently received for being a Tree City USA. This is a recognition given by the Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the U.S. Forestry Service and the National Association of Statewide Foresters. There are four criteria that have to be met in order to receive this recognition. First of all, we have to have someone at the city dedicated towards managing our forests, and that's Superintendent Espy and his staff. They are out there on a daily basis trimming dead branches, removing dead trees, and doing other maintenance work that is required to maintain the urban forest that we all enjoy. Secondly, we have to invest at least $2 per resident in the upkeep of our urban forest, and we meet that criteria. Thirdly, we have to have an ordinance that protects our residents from trees that might fall on private property or do other damage. And fourth, we have to have a proclamation and an Arbor Day celebration, which we did a couple of weeks ago as we planted two trees on Hayes Boulevard. So we receive benefits from this urban forestry as residents of the city. It helps clean the air. It helps give us shade. It actually has been proven to stabilize property values in our neighborhoods. So DeKalb wouldn't be DeKalb without the forestry, and so we want to thank the council for their support so far and looking forward to continued support of our urban forestry. I'll come out and officially receive that, and I understand we're going to take a picture of that also, correct? Where would you like me, Jeff? Right here? Yep. I'm now going to ask city clerk Sue Herman to come up front here to accept a proclamation on Municipal Clerks Week, May 7 through 13, 2017. You didn't think it was going to start so quickly, huh, Sue?
I'm ready.
I Jerry Smith, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through 13, 2017, as Municipal Clerks Week, and extend appreciation to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and for their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Sue? There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tim, you get to come up again. I'd like to ask our Public Works Director, Tim Holderman, to come to the dais to accept a proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week, May 7 through 13, 2017. I Jerry Smith, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens that May 7 through May 13, 2017, is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and the contributions of government employees at all federal, state, county, and city levels. Congratulations, Tim Holderman. We have no one to receive the next proclamation, but we will be turning that over to our Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott, who will see that it is delivered to the appropriate party. I Jerry Smith, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14 through May 20 as National Nursing Home Week, a week to honor both our vulnerable citizens who receive care and the dedicated ones giving care. That's our proclamation for National Nursing Home Week, May 14 through 20, 2017. I'd like to ask our Deputy Police Chief, John Petragallo, or Petragallo, to, that's probably the first time your name has ever been mispronounced, right, John? To come to the dais here to accept the proclamation for National Police Week, May 14 through 20, 2017. I Jerry Smith, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14 through May 20, 2017, as National Police Week, and urge all citizens of DeKalb to honor those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to this community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Officer Petragallo, I'm so pleased to give you this proclamation for National Police Week, May 14 through 20. Assistant City Manager Patty Hoppinstep, you will be receiving the proclamation for Bike to Work Day, May 19, 2017. Have you biked to work today?
Not today.
Not today?
But I will, May 19.
All right. I Jerry Smith, as mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 19, 2017, as Bike to Work Day, and encourage all citizens to ride their bicycles to work, to school, to the store, to the park, around their neighborhoods, and with friends and family to promote the personal and societal benefits achieved from bicycling. Patty, I'm pleased to present this proclamation to you. Following those proclamations, which we usually have a few before each and every city council meeting, we get into the meat of the matter then, if you will. Our first order tonight is a presentation. Prior to asking Susan Peterson, who's going to make a report on community-coordinated childcare, I neglected to mention that what we have in the back of the room here, or actually in the hallway out there, are some cookies and water. You're more than welcome to help yourself during the meeting if you'd like. If you want to leave the meeting early, I don't know why anybody would want to do that, but if you would like to, you're more than welcome to take some cookies and water home, Community Coordinated Childcare, which many of us know as 4C, is proud to present their FY 2017 Human Services Funding Annual Report to us. Executive Director of 4C, Susan Peterson, will make that report. Susan?
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the Aldermen and the Mayor who have left us and have done such great services for our non-for-profit community, and welcome, everyone. Some familiar faces and some Aldermen that I hope to get to know. I'm Susan Peterson. I'm the Executive Director of 4C, Community Coordinated Childcare. I want to thank you for the continued support that the city has shown Community Coordinated Childcare over the last 46 years. With the city of DeKalb funding sources, the following positive things are happening. Vital services are offered to help families and children sustain economic stability for families that are struggling with poverty. It enables parents who are students at NIU and Kewahke College to continue their path to economic stability, to pursue a degree, to get a vocation, and to help the young children in our community be ready for kindergarten. These are pathways for families that want to better themselves, be community partners, and is an economic stimulus for our whole community. We're successfully providing a bridge between parents, providers, and community leaders and funders. Specifically, the dollars that you give us support a percentage of the outreach that our social worker and our nurse provide. During their weekly visits at our childcare centers, they help identify problems that children are experiencing, both emotional, social-emotional, and sometimes medical. These problems, whether they are medically involved or emotionally involved, if they're caught early, we're able to give them support, education, and sometimes financial sustainability for them to go on and for these children to be successful. Bottom line, what we try and do at 4C every day is help families succeed. We want children to be ready for kindergarten. We want families to have the support they need to be valued, and we want them also to engage in our community and to be good citizens. Right now, what I'm hoping for 2018 is that 4C is able to help with some of the problems that we're going to incur with what happened with our mental, with our local health department. A lot of what we do are screenings for both vision and hearing, so we're anticipating in our fiscal year, starting in July 1st, that we're going to be very busy, and they're going to be doing some gap holding and some filling in for what our services are going to need. In closing, I want to say that each day, there are 2,000 children that attend some kind of program in DeKalb. It is important that these children are nurtured, educated, welcomed, and valued, and with the help of the city council, the community, our funders, and our partners, everyone will succeed. I want to thank you again. What an exciting evening for all of you, and I hope to see all of you. If some of you have not been to 4C or would like to know more about our services, I'm a block and a half away, I'd love to tell you more about what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Are there any questions or comments from the city council members regarding 4C on Susan's report? Yep, none? Thank you very much, Susan. I appreciate your help. As many of you who come As many of you who come to the city councils or follow the meetings, you'll know that the city does support a number of human services organizations in the county. And as a matter of routine, we do get reports, obviously written reports, but verbal reports also. And it's those verbal reports that are very, very similar to what Susan at 4C presented us. Is Kim Volk in our audience? Is anybody here from Kish Health System Behavioral Health Services? Okay, we will remove that item from the agenda and hope that that particular organization, from Ben Gordon Center, comes to our city council meeting at another time and makes that report. For those of you who, again, come to the meetings and perhaps you picked up an agenda, you'll see the next item on the agenda is the approval of the mayor's appointments. That does not occur each and every meeting. I have no appointments tonight. However, let me say this, that as I alluded to in my opening remarks, I am meeting with each and every one of our commissions and boards. There are some vacancies. I am reaching out to those organizations to see what it is that they want to do going forward as it relates to their membership. And so, there will be some appointments, I would suspect, over the next several weeks, several months, to our boards and commissions. Very important boards and commissions that really provide us, as a city council, input. But there are none, no mayor's appointments tonight. Also, you'll see on the agenda, we have public participation. We usually ask someone to register and to ask one of our city clerks, in this case, we have two over there, a deputy city manager and a city clerk, to speak to items which are not on the agenda for tonight. Are there any members of the public wishing to make any comments regarding any items that are not on tonight's agenda? And again, when we get to those agenda items, those folks who may have comments then will be invited to, to make their comments. Again, for the information of some of you, we have an omnibus vote, one vote, for those items which are, in most cases, routine items. We call that the consent agenda. As a result of one item, which is on the regular agenda, we are removing one item off the consent agenda. And that is the item, what number is that?
Item three.
Three, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement with DeKalb Corn Fest for the 2017 DeKalb Corn Fest from August 24 through August 27, 2017. And the reason we're moving that to our regular agenda is because one of our city councilmen, Mr. Fagan, is an employee of a company that will be mentioned in that agreement with Corn Fest. And Mr. Fagan has already said that he would recuse himself from that vote. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Jacobson, seconded by Mr. Fanouken. Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Items for, you're looking at me like you want to say something, City Attorney for ERS.
Yes, Mayor Smith. So the city's practice typically with regard to the consent agenda would be either before approval of the listing or approval of the actual items on it, that the mayor would read each of the items on it to ensure that we're fully complying with the Open Meetings Act and identifying them. And then there is a second vote. So we don't read the entire staff memo. It's just a listing of the actual items and a second vote to actually go through and approve the listing.
Okay, I can do that. We approved the consent agenda, item number one, the approval of city council minutes, the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of April 10, 2017, the minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 10, 2017. We received and filed the accounts payable and payroll through May 8, 2017, in the amount of $2,105,535.27. We received and filed the investment and bank balance summary, March 2017. We received and filed the FY 2017 First Quarter Financial Review. And we received and filed the Human Services Funding FY 2017 First Quarter Report. And as you just heard, we pulled the resolution between the DeKalb Corn Fest and the city onto the regular agenda. Would you like us to have another vote on that, since I did read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a motion to, once again, approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Mr. Fagan?
Second.
Second by Mr. Marquart. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Okay, now we get into items for separate action. We're going to, first of all, for the second reading, this was approved in first reading at our last council meeting, its ordinance 2017-024, authorizing a special use permit for a gas station at 1020 North First Street, Kelly Williamson Company, Mobil. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, this was read at first reading on April 24th. And since we have some new council members, I'll go a little more detail on the second reading. Mobil would like to construct an unintended self-service gas station at the southeast corner of North First Street in Hillcrest Drive. The site's been vacant for over 20 years. The current property owner bought the property in 1994 and was determined after that that there was some remediation needed on the site, which they did conclude in January of 2016 through the Illinois EPA. What's proposed is four fuel islands, a total of 10 fuel pumps. There'll be a small utility building onsite. There'll be no convenience store in relation to this operation. The site access, they'll have a full access on Hillcrest Drive and North First Street. There's currently a full access closer to the intersection, which they'll be removing and maintaining the two full access points furthest away from the intersection. The gas station canopy will run north and south in the middle of the site in the small utility building. The parking spaces, the trash enclosure will be on the east side of the property. There's adequate room for truck turning movements throughout the site. The building will be constructed of masonry material, gray face brick. In addition to the canopy poles, will be constructed the same materials and the trash enclosure, trash enclosure will be surrounded by materials matching the building also. They meet the parking requirements. There'll only be two parking spaces. Landscaping is provided on the site in lieu of some birmingham. They're providing additional shrubs on the property. And also, there'll be sodding instead of seeding the grass areas. The ground signs and wall signs will meet the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. The applicant also requested a variance on the lighting. Variances in the Unified Development Ordinance are reviewed and action is taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It does not go to the city council. But I'll highlight what they did approve. The applicant requested a variance regarding the foot candle levels or the intensity of lighting on the site. And we allow up to a maximum of five foot candles for commercial zone properties. They were at just over nine. They actually reduced the intensity from their first middles. As kind of a comparison, Casey's recently approved at Peace Road in Lincoln, they had a average foot candle level of just under five. Now that site's a little bit larger, quite a bit larger than this site. So their light was more dispersed throughout the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, which is required for every special use request and variance. They conducted their meeting on March 29th. They recommended approval of the special use permit along with the site plan by a vote of four to zero. There were three members absent. And the commission also approved the same night, under a separate motion, they approved the variance request on the lighting by the same vote, four to zero. At the April 24th council meeting, there was a question or inquiry regarding the average daily traffic counts at the intersection, North First Street and Hillcrest Drive. I gathered those numbers and put them into the council memo. The applicants noted they reviewed the traffic counts, you know, prior to coming into the city. And they've indicated that their other locations have the same traffic counts or higher and they're successful operations. And actually, the traffic counts on Hillcrest Drive, East and North First Street, and also First Street, North of Hillcrest, those are higher than what's on East Lincoln Highway in terms of traffic counts. Financial impact, the approval of the petition will allow development of a site that's been vacant for well over 20 years to a gas station will have a positive impacts of future tax generation and impact on the surrounding area. So staff recommends approval of the ordinance as prepared and certainly take any questions you may have.
Given that this was second reading, I would entertain a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Fanouken?
Second.
Second by Mr. Marquart. Ms. Noriko?
Thank you. I did receive some comment on this proposal. However, in reviewing the timeframe, particularly the fact that the property has been vacant for 20 years, that the current owners have spent considerable time and expense in remediating the property, and also the fact that the other vacant gas station on the nearby corner is not likely to be developed soon because of the fines against it. After additional consideration, I am still in favor of this action. I think, you know, it will add developed property, you know, to the space. And certainly, I think that's far preferable to having a vacant site which there is no other, you know, clearly visible opportunity for it.
Thank you, Kate. Any other discussion? Mr. Jacobson?
I think it's important, obviously, to balance the need for growth and the need for development with what makes sense. In this corner specifically, I had several comments and actually had a very long discussion with a gentleman that grew up here and lived in town for over 50 years via Facebook regarding why I voted no on the first read. My issue with that corner is that we still have another vacant site across the street that is very likely going to require some significant remediation efforts. In terms of tax generation, I don't believe necessarily it will generate any net new tax revenues, being that the likelihood of use of the site would be from transfer sales from our other gas stations in town. And in that site that has proven for many, many years that it can't support two gas stations, you are allowing to be built a gas station that provides maybe one FTE of staff member to compete with one that actually offers benefit to the neighborhood as a whole across the street in terms of offering a convenient center, a public bathroom, a very well-lit site, all those things. I just think that there's other opportunities for that site, being that the co-tendencies next door are both light industrial and commercial and that merely throwing a unsupervised, unstaffed gas station there to pull some transfer sales for the benefit of an owner that has not maintained that site within our city for 20 years is a mistake until we have a plan of what to do with the greater First and Hillcrest corridor.
Thank you, David. Any further discussion? Is there anyone in the audience who has registered and would like to come up to address this issue? Yes? Please come and identify yourself to the audience and to the city council before your remarks. Thank you.
I just want to explain that it is an unattended-
In your name?
I am Sharon Sykes from Kelly Williamson.
Okay, thank you.
And it would be an unattended site. I will have a manager every day there for approximately an hour, hour and a half. But I will have a staff member, a maintenance guy there, approximately three hours a day to make sure it's maintained, anything happens, helping customers out in any way. It will not only have fuel, gas, it will have diesel, anybody that has diesel in that area. We are a company of 91 years' existence. We have a station in Cortland. Our closest one is, another one is in Genoa. Everything that could happen, everything is on video. Everything, everything's videoed. There's alarm systems, there'll be an ATM there. It won't have a convenience store. So no, I won't have any outside sales. It will be well-lit in case anybody wants to go. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It will not be closed for any holidays. It's convenience of that customer that wants to go that way.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Would you entertain some questions? If any of our city councilmen have any questions of you? Anyone? David?
In terms of diesel, I don't think necessarily it'd be a question for you. I think it would be for staff. Obviously, we have a restriction on the bridge at First Street for weight restriction. Is the other access point, Hillcrest, a truck route? I mean, could trucks even access that site for diesel?
Yeah, the Fire and Police Department reviewed the plan. There is a restriction on the First Street Bridge to the south. Semis will, the fuel trucks will enter off of Hillcrest and go south on First Street then enter through the site. There was a drawing in the packet that showed the photo, the drawing of that truck turning in there, meeting all the turning requirements and exiting the site back on Hillcrest. So cannot use First Street to the south. There is a restriction on that bridge.
So it would be Hillcrest that would be the access?
Yes.
So if trucks were coming to fuel on that site, they would be driving through the residential neighborhood to do so?
Same with the fuel trucks that enter and drop fuel at the station to the north, yes. Either down First Street or east on Hillcrest.
Planner Olson, I think if you could perhaps address that question. The site isn't going to be configured with commercial truck fueling islands. We're talking about the smaller diameter pumps that would be utilized for somebody that has a diesel Volkswagen or a personal diesel vehicle, not like the double island large volume-
Right. Are you talking about fuel trucks that deliver the underground tanks?
I mean, I understand that once or twice a week they're gonna, they're gonna have to come. The question is, if it's being used for commercial fueling in terms of the trucks coming in to receive fuel, not necessarily to drop it off?
Those trucks will be, I thought you were talking about the ones that drop them off. But they'll be smaller ones and be able to be handled under the canopy. They'll be smaller trucks, yeah.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mrs. Sykes. It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2017-024, authorizing a special use permit for a gas station at 1020 North First Street, Kelly Williamson Company. If we could have the roll call, please.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is Resolution 2017, authorizing an engineering services agreement with WBK Engineering LLC in an amount not to exceed Phase 1 costs of $34,480 for a traffic analysis and intersection design study. a traffic analysis and intersection design study, and Phase Two costs in an amount not to exceed $67,500 for IDOT qualified construction design and engineering plans for streetscape and signalization improvements along First Street between Lincoln Highway and the railroad tracks south of Lincoln Highway, Illinois Route 38, adjoining the Cornerstone project. I would ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Noriko?
Second.
Second by Mr. Favor. Joellen Charlton is our Director of Community Development, and she has some comments regarding this resolution. Joellen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The attached resolution presented for your consideration tonight would approve all of the items that the mayor recently mentioned in his opening remarks. Provided on the screen is a view of First Street as you're looking south from Lincoln Highway. And one of the things that we've noticed since the approval of the Cornerstone project is really how narrow that sidewalk is. Many of us were on the site today and had an opportunity to walk that. If you're two people, walking two people next to each other, you're, you are taking up the entire width of that sidewalk. And in addition to that, the open travel lane that's immediately adjacent for that for northbound traffic makes that pedestrian feel even more insecure as you are, as you're walking next to those, the traffic that's moving northerly in that, in that traffic lane. This resolution is, was presented by our engineering consultant from WBK Engineering, really in response to our question of what would it take to widen that pedestrian environment and provide an enhanced pedestrian experience along that section of the street, maybe also provide additional room for some lighting in that area, because that's another comment we've heard from our citizens, that some areas in the downtown are too dark and don't lead to that sense of security and safety. Surprisingly, or not surprisingly, I guess, depending on how you look at it, our engineering consultant advised us that because that, that roadway, even though that's our roadway, ties into the signal at Lincoln Highway, which is regulated by the state, anything that we do to modify the signal or any of the, the traffic lanes in that area need to be reviewed by and approved by the state. So a couple of things are required. First, we would need to do a study of the area to indicate whether the traffic can accommodate the loss of a traffic lane, because what we're talking about is widening the sidewalk into that easternmost travel lane. There are two northbound travel lanes, one that goes forward, and then one that turns to the right or goes forward as well. So in order to drop that lane and be consistent with the travel, traffic patterns that are south of the tracks, we would need to do a study to determine whether that impact would back up traffic to an extent that would not be acceptable, or whether we would need to revise some of the signals to provide for a shorter time. The bottom line is, we don't want to create a situation where we have too much traffic backing up to the tracks. So that would be the first phase of the study. And then also to do an intersection design study, it's an IDS study that's recognized by the state, which would basically tell us what type of geometrics, or how you would design the intersection, and what types of changes to the signal would be required to accommodate those movements. We are basically at the point now where we would like to recommend that the, that we split this project into two phases. As the mayor indicated, the total project costs are not to exceed $101,980, but the very first phase of that would be a cost of $34,480. And that would give us the study, or the traffic analysis to determine whether it can be accommodated, and the intersection design study. At that point, once we have that information from the consultant, we would come back to the council for presentation of that information, and show you what their recommendation is, and whether that can be accommodated, and what types of improvements would be required. Additionally, WBK would be providing us with a preliminary cost estimate. So not only will you know how to fix the problem, but you would be presented with information about how much it would cost to actually construct that problem. At that point, we would be asking for the council's concurrence to continue to the second phase of the project, which would get into the actual preparation of construction drawings. And we went ahead and had WBK provide us with that estimate, just so that we could use the same firm that has started on doing all of the preliminary work and understanding, and move right away into that second phase, but only upon the council's agreement and concurrence with the Phase One, and that you want to move on to Phase Two. Again, the resolution that's presented for your consideration outlines all of those items. Staff is recommending approval of this at this point, because as we got into reviewing the developer's planning documents, we acknowledged the fact that their, the construction drawings were already including the restoration of many, a significant section of that sidewalk on First Street. Obviously, it's right there, it's on the property line, so the demolition work and everything else that he's going to be working on is going to tear up that area. So he's going to need to restore it anyway. And we were just posed with the question of, you know, if, if we're gonna do this, now is the right time. We don't want to put something back and then decide a year, or five, or 10 years from now that we should have widened that sidewalk. So we're presenting it to you at this point. I believe the mayor had a conversation with the developer today as well on, on sharing some of this process.
Yes, I was there for the picture-taking session. We actually had a picture-taking session of the, the, the former city council, and the former mayor, and the new city council, and, and myself. And I asked John Pappas, the developer of the project, what he thought of that sidewalk, and he wasn't too familiar with it, but all he had to do is go around and take a look at that, that very narrow sidewalk there on the west side of the building. And he verbally pledged $25,000 for this study, regardless of whether we do Phase One only or Phase One and Two. So I thought that was an indication of his, not only his support, but obviously, it is in his best interest, I think, especially if he does that restaurant idea at the, at the bottom level of Cornerstone. It would certainly make sense then, because he's gonna have, I would think, a larger crowd coming from that new parking lot south of Lincoln Highway, along this, the west side of that building. So that was just for, for the information, Joellen, he, he pledged that today.
Great. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone on the council might have.
Yes. Further discussion? Ms. Noriko?
I was pleased to see that part of the consideration would be the lighting along there. Certainly, you know, it's typically well-trafficked in terms of, you know, the cars, but as a pedestrian, you know, a woman walking along there, you know, at night, it certainly, you know, is not really well-lit. And so I think that was, that is a valuable piece of the proposed project.
Any other discussion? Mr. Fagan?
So if we vote on this tonight, it would be for Phase One, and the contribution of the developer.
The, the amount that would be approved tonight for Phase One would be $34,480, of which the developer has pledged $25,000. So the city's out-of-pocket expense to find out what's required and what it would cost, and get the preliminary stuff ready for IDOT approval would be $9,480.
Yeah, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Fanoukian?
You know, I'm in favor of going, going ahead and doing the Phase One study, particularly in terms of the lighting and the streetscape there. I am concerned, though, about losing that eastmost lane of traffic because of the aforementioned possibility of vehicles backing up to railroad tracks. And I think that if we were to go to address that, we'd also should look at the following two intersections to the north, because we have two lanes there and two lanes up at Pine Street, where we have issues with people stopping, turning left, or as you get to Pine Street, where people then try and force themselves from where it goes to two lanes down into one lane. And if we could, maybe in conjunction with this, maybe we can make both of those, where that left lane would be a left turn-only lane at those two intersections. I think if all of that worked together, that might help, not just at the Lincoln Highway intersection.
Okay.
Further discussion or questions of Joellen? Yes, Mr. Verbic?
While I certainly support the safety of our pedestrians on that sidewalk, and can see how this first study could, could tell us more information about that, my challenges are the traffic, as, as Mr. Fanoukian mentioned, but also the, the use of TIF dollars. What we're finding is that we're perhaps committing $100,000, and then whatever the construction costs could be on this project, which could be $400,000, $500,000, we don't really know yet for sure. And I'm not convinced that we have a grasp of where we're at financially as a whole with TIF. So we've made some commitments with TIF. We have strategic plan ideas in store with TIF dollars, and I really think before we have any more requests of use of TIF money, that we take a close look at what is really available.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Jacobson?
Obviously, if this is coming out of TIF, are we sacrificing anything else to do this? I know a question arose in the past week or two about an investment we made out of, in the BMS incentive, that effectively cost us the $1 million of road work improvements that we assumed we were getting. Where has this come out of?
The fund balance in TIF is healthy enough to absorb what we've already, the commitments that we've already made, and certainly this first level of commitment. We don't know yet what the cost estimate will be, so part of this first phase would give us that information, and we would be able to incorporate that into the analysis. We are working on presentations that will be part of the budget process, that would describe in more detail the situation or the status of our TIF fund, and our projects, and our anticipated projects, and what we would recommend moving forward. So that, that is expected to be presented to you when we begin the budget process in the middle of the summer.
When we're contemplating what Phase Three will look like, I mean, do we have any internal estimate of what this project may look like?
We don't, and, to construct?
Correct.
No, we don't have that at this point.
Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions?
It's not millions.
Okay.
And a big part of it is, you know, is it, there's the timing of the signal. We have, are we changing one curb, or do we have to change two? Does the lighting only work on one side? We're also hoping to explore through this process any phasing opportunities that might make sense, so that we could get what we need to get done to make it work while it's torn up, and then maybe incorporate later phases at a later time as different projects come up, or as funding is better understood, and we want to incorporate more into the project. But we have talked to the consultant about that phasing concept being incorporated into their plan, so that we can hopefully understand what we can do at this time.
Mr. Fagan?
If nothing was done, and with the developer going in with the demo work, obviously busting up the sidewalk, he has to replace that sidewalk, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if we did do any change of that corner, or that street, would he be paying for X amount of feet for the sidewalk?
Yes. I, I did talk to him about this project, and he understands that he'd be responsible for a certain portion of the costs anyway. So let's say, you know, we, the scenario I laid out to him was, let's say we need five more feet, or seven more feet. He understands that he would be responsible for replacing the curb and that amount of sidewalk that he would have been responsible for anyway. That's kind of the starting place that we, we talked to him about.
Any other discussion from city council? Anybody from the audience, from, with public participation wanting to speak to this? Yes, Dean?
Mayor, just to Mr. Fagan's earlier point, the motion that's on the floor at present is just a motion to approve this as it's listed in the agenda, so it is not contingent on the developer's contribution towards it. And we can certainly return that to council at a future date, but we would not have staff authority to enter into an agreement of that nature. So I just wanted to be clear, the motion is for approval of this. If the council wanted to either make it contingent on the developer's contribution and/or authorize staff to do a very simple agreement that says, we'll take the $25,000, we'd be happy to help you frame a motion.
Just one more point of clarification, if I may. Are we only approving Phase One or also Phase Two tonight?
Now, the way that this is brought forward, it indicates in the resolution, this is only Phase One. And Phase One comes back with the study and with an estimate of construction costs, and gives the council the ability to determine if you wish to go forward in any capacity or end it. But we are limited to Phase One approval without a further council vote.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2017 authorizing the engineering services agreement with WBK Engineering, as we've discussed. Pam? Did you, have you registered, Pam? Okay. Why don't you come up and introduce yourself?
Um, I'm just a couple of...
And spell that last name, would you?
Pam Verbic.
Verbic, yes, okay.
I, I looked at this rather closely, and I had just a couple, as a citizen, questions about, as far as Phase One, is it possible to do that in-house? And then as far as the lighting, have we discussed with Mr. Pappas or his contractor, what kind of lighting is going to be on that side of the building? And in his parking lot, that may provide a certain amount of illumination, that we wouldn't have to put any investment in city lighting. In other words, if he had lighting along that side of his building, and so forth, you understand what I'm talking about. So I, I thought that perhaps our Public Works Department might be able to do the in-house Phase One portion of that, unless we have an IDOT-approved engineering person in that department.
Thank you, Pam. Can any staff member address that? Public Works Director Holdman?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you know, we are currently without a city engineer, and we are contracting services for those city engineer services. We are very sensitive to the costs associated with that, and so we really don't have the resources within that city engineering budget to undertake these kinds of studies in-house.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this resolution? It's been moved and seconded. I'd ask for a roll call. Oh, yes, excuse me, Mr. Verbic.
So then, Mr. Feeters, are you suggesting that we amend our motion to include the total from Pappas, the contribution of $25,000?
That's at the council's discretion. I just wanted to be, Mr. Fagan had asked about that earlier. I wanted to make sure we were clear on that point. It is not currently a part of the motion.
Then may, if I may, offer an amendment to that motion to include, however it needs to be worded, the contribution from the developer of Cornerstone of $25,000.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mr. Verbic, seconded by Mr. Fagan. Mr. Fanoukian?
Lacking a letter of understanding or anything with the developer in writing, I would hate to, I would hesitate to include that motion at this time, but we could, as Attorney Feeder suggested, include that later in the process.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just for clarity on what the motion brought forward is then. Holdman, Verbic, your motion would be a motion to amend the approval to make it contingent upon the developer's contribution of $25,000?
Yes, please.
And did that also include staff authority to enter into an agreement for that purpose?
As well, yes.
And that was also your, your second?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
No.
Markwart?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Five yes?
So that means that we have amended that motion. Now we're going back to the Now, we're going back to the original motion, which is approving the resolution as amended. Any further discussion? If not, roll call on the original resolution. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Markwart.
So, now, we're, we're hung up, and we were not doing anything until we enter into this agreement.
With staff authority to proceed forward, we will contact Mr. Pappas tomorrow, and I'm confident we'll get that resolved immediately.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukakis?
No.
Markwart?
No.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko? Yes. Smith?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to take the item that was taken off the consent agenda, if you recall. And Mr. Fagan will recuse himself from this vote, and will take a seat. This is the resolution. Let me find it. 2017 authorizing an agreement with the DeKalb Corn Fest, Inc., for the 2017 DeKalb Corn Fest, from August 24, 2017, through August 27, 2017. I'd ask for a motion to approve that resolution.
So, moved.
Second? Approved by, moved by Ms. Noriko, seconded by Mr. Favor. Joe Allen, do you have a comment on this?
I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay.
So, I think it was pulled for any, any specific comments?
All right. Mr. Fanoukakis.
If I may, last year, as I recall, the ordinance also read that the street was not to be closed till 4 o'clock, but Corn Fest personnel were closing parking as early as 1 o'clock in the afternoon on Lincoln Highway. That was causing some difficulties for the merchants, with their customers not being able to get to their doors, and then also with some repair services who were servicing the merchants, that were being forced to park, you know, in the lots on the backside of the building, or somewhere else, and they hadn't to haul their tools in. And I'd like to make it very clear this year, that the street is not closing till 4 o'clock. Now, I understand that there are some spaces that need to be set aside and covered, because the generators will be delivered, and we don't have any control over when the vendor delivers the generators. That part I understand, but I'd like to make sure that the majority of the parking stays open until that street's closed at 4 o'clock.
Thank you. I did reach out to Lisa Angel today, who coordinates the event, and she did confirm for me that they acknowledged the closure time is 4 o'clock, but that there are four spaces where they do accept the generators at 1 o'clock. But it's only limited to four spaces, so we'll make sure they understand that it's not to extend beyond that, those four spaces.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the resolution, on the agreement between DeKalb Corn Fest and the city? Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukakis?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Noriko? Yes. Verbic?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes?
That completes the, the information and the action needed on our regular agenda. We have no new or unfinished business scheduled for this meeting. Anyone have any? If not, I would ask for communications. This is the point of the program where we ask each of our aldermen and our city department heads to report or communicate anything that they might think is germane to our meeting. Alderman Jacobson?
No report.
Alderman Fanoukakis?
Just a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Ray, Alderman Snow, and Alderman Baker for their service to the city. Would like to welcome aboard our two new members, Pat and Mike, and look forward to working with you over the next few years. And then also, just wanted to compliment the NIU ArtiGraz event that happened the other day, with a number of student shows were downtown, the merchants that participated, and then the variety show that was at the Egyptian. As I understand, there were approximately 250 people in attendance, and it was a very good show. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markwart?
No report.
Mr. Fagan?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I'm excited on being an alderman here, and I am working on a place and time for a town hall meeting for Fourth Ward. And once, once we figure that out, we'll go ahead and put that on the website.
Mayor Noriko?
I want to welcome my fellow new council members. If they have any questions, I will fall back on my vast years of experience, my two years. You know, I also am looking forward to working with Mayor Smith.
Thank you.
And, you know, continuing good things happening for the city.
Mr. Verbic?
Well, one of the primary reasons I'm here is due to the love and support of my family, my wife Jennifer, children Michael and Grace, Mother Pam, who stood with me to be sworn in, and great friends of the audience, Robin and Mike, all the voters of the ward, and support through the city. Thank you very much. I really look forward to serving with you all, and thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Tony?
No report.
City Clerk Herman?
No report.
Deputy City Clerk and City Manager, Assistant City Manager Ruth Scott?
No report.
Attorney Frieders?
To help quell Alderman Markwart's concerns, we have already received an email from Mr. Pappas, indicating that he'll be at City Hall tomorrow with his contribution, and we'll have an agreement in place.
I know.
Nothing further.
City Manager Anne Marie Gora?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff and I look forward to working with all the newly-elected officials, and we're here to support you and serve you, so feel free to reach out to any of us. You have our assistance and help.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Hoppstadt?
I just want to say, welcome, Alderman and new mayor. I look forward to working with you. And since you haven't heard this plug sitting out there, I encourage all residents to go to the city website and sign up for our e-newsletter. We just had one sent out for May last week, and we do have them archived on the website, so if you missed the May, and the one prior to that, we now have two on the website. And please welcome any feedback on types of information that you would like to see in the e-news. So, I, again, welcome, and it's an honor, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Deputy Police Chief John Petragallo?
No report.
Bob Miller, who is our Assistant Finance Director?
Yeah, I have no report, thank you.
Okay. Eric Hicks, our Fire Chief?
Congratulations, and I look forward to welcome you.
Thank you. Joe Allen Charlton?
Thank you, no report.
Public Works Director Tim Holdeman?
Thank you, Mayor. We're in the process of narrowing down two dates for our first public meeting, on the asset management plan for streets and fleet. We will be doing it the week of May 22. We're looking at Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We'll select two of those evenings at the Police Department Community Room, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. So, the specifics on which two days of those three in the middle of that week, we will be announcing that in the next couple of days, as we confirm other schedules. Thank you.
Thank you. Human Resources Director Chris Randall?
Hi, I also would like to welcome all the new council members, and please let us know if there's anything that we can help during the transition.
And our IT Director Mark Thorson?
I'd also like to welcome the new council, and it's an honor and a privilege to work with you, so, thank you.
As we adjourn this evening's meeting, I thank you for your attention, as this mayoral newcomer gavels us to a close. I'd ask for your continued patience, as this newly-organized city council continues its work to serve the residents of DeKalb. Allow me to close with a few words you're going to hear me say many times over the weeks and months ahead, as we continue to be proudly DeKalb. It's a new day in DeKalb, let's catch the spirit. We are adjourned. (APPLAUSE).
We have to have a motion for that, Jerry. Yeah, Mayor, a motion.
We did a motion, I know. Mr. Verbic? Mr. Markwart, would you second that?
Second.
So, moved and seconded, that we adjourned?
You need to state, "All in favor, indicate by saying..."
All in favor?
Indicate by saying aye?
Indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed? So, move. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Not too much. I didn't, I didn't stir it up too much.
We can just say, "Excuse the city manager."